I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on June 19th at 5:31 PM for our work session. And we will start with a review of agenda and items on consent. Does anyone have any comments? There are none. Any councilor concerns?
Uh, me.
Counselor Leehan.
Uh, just was wondering on the chlorine situation since it was in the, oh, is that coming up somewhere? I was mostly concerned, I know it's not a big factor in our water treatment plant, but for our water features are a little more intensive, I think. But was that an issue for us, cost or availability?
My understanding is we have about a 45-day supply, which is better than most people because we contract with Violia for our water plant and that we don't have any supply issues for the water features at this time.
Oh, okay.
And my understanding of the plant in Long Beach that's down, wherever it is in California, will be back online later this week or early next week. So that will resolve that issue.
Okay. Okay. Hearing no other concerns, thanks for bringing that up. We will move to our pre-council work session and a presentation on the Town Center Streetscape Plan. We'll ask our staff member to begin and introduce.
My name is Philip Bradford, Associate Planner with the City of Wilsonville. One of the implementation actions of the Town Center Plan is to create a cohesive design palette for future streets in Town Center based on the community preferences. Tonight, the project team is here to present the specific design elements proposed for the Town Center Streetscape Plan to receive confirmation and feedback that the overall aesthetic is in line with the city's vision for Town Center. In previous work sessions with City Council and Planning Commission, the project team has been asked about cost. In response, we are recommending three different investment levels for streets within Town Center to focus investment on the most active areas envisioned in the Town Center Plan. These investment levels will be illustrated as prototypes in specific locations in Town Center. The investment levels were presented to Planning Commission at the June 9th work session and commissioners were supportive of the locations the project team proposed for prototype illustrations of these investment levels and requested that the final plan identify specific investment levels for each street in Town Center. Today's presentation will include more detail on the investment levels and proposed design elements within each. The specific fixtures shown tonight are likely what will be included in the final plan that will come before you for adoption this fall. As we'll note in this presentation, certain fixed features like lighting may be subject to change pending your input and further staff review. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about these elements at the conclusion of the presentation. With that, I will pass the presentation over to our consultant with Sarah, Ben Weber, for the PowerPoint.
All right. Thank you very much, Philip. Can you hear me okay? I hope that's a yes. All right. Thank you, City Council, for your time and attention to this project tonight. Again, my name is Ben Weber with Sarah Architects, and I believe we last met in early April and you were not all in the same room at that point, so glad to see you're back in chambers. Let me get our presentation for the evening pulled up here. All right. So as Philip mentioned, we'll be spending some time looking at the location investment level recommendations. We have seven specific spots and then there'll be an ongoing effort to look at streets throughout the entire Town Center. I'll dive into that a little bit more over top of a map. We'll review the streetscape furnishings and elements. So those are some specific materials, products and surfaces that we're recommending at those three different investment levels. And then a few questions for discussion with you all to try to get your confirmation about, you know, the ongoing vision for the Town Center streets and if you're seeing the evolving design solutions here fulfilling that to your satisfaction. So here we are, quickly in the timeline. Two weeks ago, we went to Planning Commission to have a similar conversation that was a bit more in-depth on the location selection. Tonight with you all, we'll be doing a little bit more on the design elements and then input for both of that, as well as technical review from the city will feed into the continued development of our draft plan. I think the track right now is to probably be coming back to you in August with the near final draft to start pursuing adoption. So you'll hopefully remember this image from a few months ago. This was a study that we did to begin exploring the three different investment levels. You're seeing here a signature street. That's sort of the primary street here running from the center to the right. And that's intersecting a local street which just uses standard investment level. So that's just to put a finer point on this, that we have, you know, streets of two different investment levels coming together in this one location. And that's certainly a condition that will happen a lot in the Town Center, where you're balancing the degree of change and sort of the intensity of the streetscape investment that you're making. So hopefully, as you've been able to think about this image the last couple of months, now we can talk a little bit more about how we're going to continue this process for other locations and flesh out all the different design pieces. So here's a map you have not seen so far showing the Town Center and then the seven different infrastructure locations that we intend to design with more detail over the next couple of months. And so the numbers here correspond to the infrastructure projects listed in the Town Center Plan from a few years ago. So we wanted to ensure we had that parallelism and consistency as we're looking at this investment and bringing a little bit more refinement to the streetscape design. So what you'll see here is locations like number three, the Park Place redesign, location four, the Park Place Extension, which is the rendering we just showed, and location 12, the promenade that gets closer to the I-5 Bridge. Those would all be signature design locations where the city is making the most investment in the streetscape through trees, materials, seating, and a number of other unique design features. And that's really to bolster sort of the activity, the intensity of design on those main street areas and those highest volume mixed-use sort of avenues throughout the Town Center. You'll see others here like number six and seven, you know, seven actually being an intersection, not a street, but that's the enhanced design. So it's basically the middle level, and I'll show you more details on that. And then Town Center Loop West and location nine, the overall local road network being proposed for standard designs. So that's, you know, overall improvements and consistency and a lot of nice features to the standard design, but just not as many bespoke elements, you know, as you would have in the enhanced and the signature. So then, as Philip mentioned, you know, we'll be prototyping these seven in the plan, but we'll also be making an identification of every street that we can in the Town Center for what recommended investment level. So we're kind of looking at two different things right now, the prototypes and then the investment levels. Just a little more detail on that. Standard design, we're using a lot of existing public works standards, particularly for key features like stormwater, curb extensions and sidewalks. We will have a couple of products that are unique to Town Center overall, and that includes benches, potentially the street lighting that we'll talk about, trash cans, and some of those other installed features in addition to planting and landscaping that will be informed by the urban forestry management plan happening right now. Enhanced design is a level up from that. It takes some of those standard features, but then embellishes them more. There's a design treatment that we're looking at in the sidewalk that we'll show you. More opportunity for some custom seating, potentially more places for stormwater features and art also to fit into the streetscape. And then finally, the signature design, where you'll see a custom pattern, as you've seen in that image, for the sidewalk and the crosswalk, signature seating, lighting fixtures, and a lot of elements that are going to be pretty unique to the Town Center and these signature streets overall. So really reflective of making that that degree of significant investment. We'll let this slide filter in here. Just for context, you know, we grabbed a few images of streetscapes around Oregon and the Northwest and Western United States generally, just to kind of organize our thoughts. You know, we're not using these specific designs or materials, but when we think about standard, you know, kind of looking at these two images on the left, wide sidewalks, space for seating, trees and tree grates, streetlights, you know, all of those comfort-making amenities. Enhanced design starts to bring in more landscaping features, you know, maybe some custom benches or knee walls like you're seeing in the lower middle. Specialty treatments for the street grates or even special materials in the sidewalk. And then signature design, it was a pretty bespoke streetscape, like you have in Sisters, Oregon, or on Bainbridge Island, Washington, these two images on the right. There's a lot of attention paid to, you know, almost quite literally every square foot of the streetscape and the use of special materials, patterns, and the most possible landscaping, trees and lighting features overall. So far, we've tackled two of these prototypes. So you saw the rendering that showed both a standard and a signature. These are those same things put into plan view, so you can see a standard design on the left that has the street trees, you know, safety improvements in the crosswalks, buffered bike lanes, all sorts of features that the Town Center Plan identified two years ago, and we're continuing to flesh out here. And then the signature design, the Park Place Extension to be specific here, uses this custom sidewalk pattern, a repeating pattern in the crosswalks, you know, to continue that design feature. The seating, that integrated planter and stormwater area that exists on the curb extensions and the mid-block crossings. So we'll dive into that a little bit more when we get to the elements. So to get right into these pieces, we're going to kind of go through sort of component by component here. You know, with sidewalk design, you'll see the standard, that's going to be a recognizable kind of broom-finished sidewalk, something that you've seen all over Wilsonville, from Old Town to, you know, Villebois to so many places in between. So a fairly recognizable approach there. With enhanced, we're bringing in these pavers or concrete stamping into the furnishing zone. So that's that bit of space, you know, the four feet or so where planters and benches and other amenities go. And I apologize, that white arrow is pointing just a little too far. I should pull that back into the little furnishing zone that's part of the sidewalk. And then with signature, we're looking at a, you know, custom colorization, you know, potentially using a couple of different shades of gray and, you know, some unique forms, things that aren't even square or rectangular, but perhaps a little bit more complex geometry to create a lot of dynamism and interest in the sidewalks and tie that into the crosswalks. Moving on to the crosswalk design, for standard and enhanced locations, we'll use a conventional Continental Stripe, you know, the zebra stripe pattern there that's the standard, you know, citywide for new street improvements. And then in signature locations, you know, instead of it being asphalt, we would actually continue the concrete of the sidewalk through the crosswalk and put in a repetitious multicolored pattern through there to really help define the pedestrian space, promote vehicular safety and be in compliance with all the motor vehicle laws, but also to just tie together the streetscape in these main street areas so that you can go blocks and blocks and blocks through walking, biking and shopping, you know, using the same kind of fabric of the sidewalk environment. With benches and seating, looking over at the standard product, this is a landscape forms bench. So we're recommending a unique bench for Town Center, something that hasn't been installed anywhere else in Wilsonville, at least to our knowledge, to help bring a little bit of distinction to the Town Center and use benches on every street as a unifying feature. You know, this bench is simple, versatile, comes in a lot of different configurations, but uses those natural woods and sort of muted metals that we've been talking about for a couple of years now. It's really important for helping define the identity of the Town Center. For enhanced, there's a product called the Street Life Rough and Ready that can be customized into a lot of unique shapes that you can order over and over. So you could have, you know, 20 or 50 of the same customized shape so you get a little bit of economy of scale there with ordering these. But it's going to be a unique configuration to the Town Center so that you can put these benches along your sidewalks, in your curb extension zones, or in some of the plazas or parks that are complements to the streetscape. And then finally, signature, we're using that same Street Life product and taking that seating material and basically wrapping it around a Corten steel planter that will have, you know, trees and planting options and can also be integrated into a stormwater planter in the curb extension. So you get, you know, lighting, trees, planting, seating and stormwater functions all in one sort of built-in-place feature. So it's a pretty unique element, you know, that you're not going to see exactly anywhere else in the world, as far as I know. With street trees, we're not using quite the same standard enhanced and signature level. We want to have a consistent palette of trees, you know, a primary street tree that ties together the full Town Center, and then an accent tree that would be used a little bit more in the enhanced and signature locations where you have more space, particularly in some of those curb extensions for additional plantings. And then in the stormwater plantings, there's a whole palette of plants, you know, bushes and shrubs that are going to be appropriate for stormwater management and kind of the unique challenges of being planted in a stormwater management area. So we're anticipating, you know, the most presence of in-street stormwater, probably on some of these signature and main street locations. This is kind of the palette that we'll be applying throughout the whole Town Center. Street lighting, and this is an area that Philip mentioned, we are still deliberating a little bit, but right now, our recommendations are to use a PGE, Portland General Electric, approved product on the Town Center Loop and Wilsonville Road. So basically ringing around the Town Center. And that's what you'll see here on the left, this Leo Tech Cobra Series, a product very similar to this that was recently already installed in some Town Center Loop locations. So we'd be consistent with that and kind of building off that investment. So these are, you know, a decently attractive product that can be configured to meet a lot of different lighting configuration needs, you know, pretty functional and pretty nondescript. In other locations, and really we're thinking every other internal street in the Town Center, you know, from Park Place to the Courtside Extension to local streets that don't even exist yet but would be built, we're looking at this Landscape Forms Rama Street Light. So there's one version in the middle that has a single head, and we think that makes sense for, it's kind of the default for the internal streets. And then the image on the right with two heads, we think makes sense on signature streets where you're wanting really customizable lighting patterns, you know, bringing different lighting onto the street and the sidewalk and having that nuance and just having the attractiveness and sort of elegance of a two-headed mast here. So one little complexity here is this is a more challenging product to get approved, you know, by PGE. Let me take that back. The approvals may not necessarily be challenging, but there is more requirement for the city. You would be the owner and the maintainer of this Rama product. And so that puts an additional, you know, maintenance and upkeep requirement on the city and the associated, you know, purchasing costs and, you know, long-term costs of maintenance for that product. So that's one of the trade-offs that we're weighing here. Philip, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to chime in now or kind of leave it for the discussion at the end.
I will hold off to the end, and if there's any specific lighting-related questions, I will answer those at that time.
All right. Thanks, Philip. And then a few others here to round out the products. These don't have the investment level choices, you know, we're looking at one product, but just understanding, they might be used more frequently in the signature locations, you know. Bike racks were the greatest demand for housing and retail, bicycle parking would be. Bollards can be used as a traffic control device, you know, to permanently or temporarily prevent vehicles from traveling up and down a street. The promenade will always be a no-vehicle street, it might be used there. Park Place is a festival street concept, and so this could be a removable bollard that on weekends or for farmers' markets or festivities, you could put the bollard in to control traffic. There's a lot of other applications for this kind of product, too. And then a trash container, this is of the same family, you know, you'll recognize the black and the wood as the bench, so another landscape forms trash container that would be located around the Town Center. We're also looking at this spin design tree grate for select locations. We think this kind of taps in nicely to the river environment concept that we talked about a few months ago and brings, you know, features of water and water droplets into the street design. Natural stone can be placed around as an accent, as a traffic control device, as seating, even in certain locations. So we'll get a little bit more into where natural stone would be used when we're doing these seven different prototype designs, and you'll see it in a small image, you know, in that signature curb extension planter. And then a cast iron ADA tactile pad, we think this makes sense to use on your signature streets, at those crosswalks and curb cut locations, to just help bring that metal aesthetic into the main streets and those high investment areas. So with that sort of in mind, all those those elements and features, hopefully that can help you kind of comprehend, you know, these different design and investment levels that we're considering and piecing together, you know, which trash cans, which benches, which lighting, which sidewalks are going to be applied in each of these locations. So we welcome, you know, your thoughts and impressions on the design features in relationship to these different prototypes. And then finally, I'll put these two official questions in front of you and then we can open up for discussion. Do the materials and fixtures capture the vision for Town Center consistent with the recommended concept? And remember, that recommended concept is the blend of the river environment and technological innovation concepts that we had been working with previously. And then are there any other modifications to the design elements that should be considered for the final draft plan? So I will gladly open it up for discussion, and I can jump back and forth for the slideshow for any exhibits you'd like to see again.
All right. Counselor President O'Gravell.
Is that okay? Can we jump in?
Yeah.
I do have a question about the lighting, and that was one of the areas that you were looking for feedback, I understand. Are there, does the city actually maintain, I feel like we have kind of a history with the, with the street lights in Wilsonville, right? Like maybe we were maintaining and then we, or we weren't, or vice versa. So currently, do we maintain any of the other streetlights?
Okay. Interesting question, Counselor President O'Gravell. So we, our preference is to use PGA Option A fixtures, which means they're owned and maintained by PGE. There's one instance that I'm aware of in town, the Old Town Cobalt Blue fixtures that are Option B because they are blue and PGE uses those in a different color, therefore they don't qualify as Option A. That has caused some maintenance difficulties, as far as I understand. The Rama fixture that we're including in the plan at the moment, we think that matches the aesthetic of what we're proposing. However, the problem with that is that it would be PG Option C, so we would have to own and maintain those fixtures. And then in addition to that, one of the concerns from Public Works this time is that we don't have the ability to store those, and it would be difficult until we have the capability to store those. A lot of the cities that do use Option C fixtures in their downtowns that have set it apart a little bit are much larger than Wilsonville and probably have larger storage facilities because you buy extra lighting in case a car crashes into one, you can replace it same day. You don't want to have a pole out. So I hope that gives a decent background on what we currently do with PGE and why the lighting is still trying to be worked out. So it would be great to have feedback tonight on whether using a more unique fixture in Town Center is worth pursuing, or we, should we find one on the Option A list that works with the design aesthetic? Thus far, we don't believe many of the ones have the potential for matching what we're proposing for the streetscapes.
It seems, you know, we wouldn't want to be in a situation where we don't have the part available to do the fix because it becomes a safety issue. So I wouldn't want to set us up for an unsuccessful situation like that. I would, I would have some hesitation, I guess, with that.
Counselor Leehan.
Yeah. Some time ago, we had the discussion about 5G and what was the expectation for that and whether they would be on light poles, and I didn't see that addressed here. Are we presuming in Town Center they would be on buildings, be on light poles, and how does that affect what light poles we would use? We're not having 5G in Town Center. What's the deal?
I recently spoke to Delora about this issue, and what I recollect is she said that PGE can work with any of the streetlights and any of the vendors to affix something 5G-related to them.
But, but remember, some of them were pretty ugly and some of them were...
Yeah, no, I know, and we have, we have our standards now in place, so yes.
I mean, some of them lent, some of the, the light pole itself lent itself to being able to house the 5G, 5G stuff and be able to access it, and, or else it was hanging out, out on the side and looked pretty bad.
Yeah.
You know, I, you can put it on anything, I'm sure, but some of them were just better...
So the concern, the takeaway is to make sure that whatever we do approve aesthetically doesn't look hideous.
Works with a 5G.
Yes.
Yeah. That'll be difficult no matter what, but try.
And I, and I, that was, when was that? A year and a half ago, two years ago?
Conversation with...
Yeah, that we, that we last saw those examples.
Oh, that was a while ago, yeah.
So they probably... So they probably have all different stuff now. But I would think both the 5G guys and the lighting design guys may have come away since then, in terms of stuff.
Sure. So we are, you're right. It's been a while since we had that discussion. We actually have a call, a conference call on Friday to get up to speed on what's been going on over the last year and a half. And we have an applicant that has come in and wants to be on certain poles that the city currently owns, but they're maintained by PGE. And PGE has said if that's the case, then PGE will have to own and maintain the poles. And so we're working that through with PGE right now, as well as the carrier that wants to use them. There still is the issue about the box on the side, however, and their displeasure with our design standards saying they have to be hidden, but that's where we are.
And then the other part of the consideration is the density of them. So if there's only two 5G poles in all of Town Center, then it's probably not a big issue. If it's, every other light pole has to have 5G hanging on it, then that's going to be a visual obstruction.
Right now, the technology requires, you know, pretty close spacing, so it could be, yes, could be difficult to make it look aesthetically pleasing.
So that seems like the, like the main driver for the aesthetics of the light poles is, because I, these are all fine light poles, I think, right here. But, but there's no 5G on them that I can see, so that, that would, that would be the one, the thing that would make a lot of difference, I think.
I, I agree with that. I mean, we're, we're looking at a design, we're looking for a design of Town Center that invites people to come to it and participate in it, frequent the shops and be there. We want it to be aesthetically pleasing. That's why we're doing all of this. But we want to balance the cost of those things out. And I also wondered if, in your talks with PGE, I know we are a valued customer, what are they doing for their future inventory of light poles for hip and modern town centers like the one we're going to build?
Mayor Fitzgerald, that's a great question. I would, I'm still waiting on a response from PGE for certain questions because I said, what flexibility do we have? Can we use a compliant pole and a unique fixture, or a non-compliant fixture and a compliant pole? So I'm still waiting to hear back on that, but they veer traditional, and it would be nice if we did have more clean contemporary options on the list because it sort of hems you into an aesthetic that's being dictated by PGE rather than the local jurisdictions themselves, so...
I think we should encourage them to take a look at these designs and look toward leaning contemporary.
Mm-hmm.
And the last, I know we, for our time on this, we might have a few more minutes on this, do we? Are we there?
No, you have six more minutes for this one.
So what other, for your questions, to make sure that we get you the responses you need, what else should we be looking at?
Does Council mostly feel satisfied with the materials and fixtures that we've chosen so far, so we return with the draft plan and there's nothing in there that you'd have a dislike towards? And it sounds like the lighting concerns were addressed. I feel like I have the feedback I need on that. And, but just to confirm, we should focus on cost, find something that works with 5G, find something that is easy to maintain, and if it's too much of a burden to do a unique fixture, then we should probably look for the best option on the compliant list. Does that sound right?
Hard to know without seeing some options that are on that list that might... But I have another question.
I do, too.
Could, Your Honor, I have another question. I noticed that on the benches and in the garbage containers that they, they were using a lot of wood. And given our weather and our, I just wondered about the maintenance on those, are they synthetic products or are they wood?
Councilor Linville, those are real natural wood products, and they're very high-quality wood. And I believe the landscape forms are kind that weathers very well in this climate. So we tried to take that into consideration, and we did run these by Public Works, and they had no issue with going the wood route. So they're, they should fade to the color that looks like the enhanced image over time.
Philip, thank you so much for coming and presenting to us. Fantastic job. As we look at standard enhanced and signature, as we go, I'm assuming as we go from different, from, from lighting to bench to sidewalks and crosswalks, it's, is it kind of à la carte that way? Like, here we are fine going standard, but we really love this feature in the sidewalks, so we like to go signature? Or is that, or is it like, this is the signature plan, this is the enhanced plan, this is the standard plan, and it's kind of as a package? How does, I'm just not clear on that.
Okay. So for the different packages of the investment levels, we're trying to focus it on which locations would be the most heavily used in traffic. So like, if, like Main Street, for example, would be signature, so the whole thing would be signature.
Okay.
Does that...
No, yeah, that's different than what I was kind of thinking. Thank you. Yeah, that clarifies it. And then I guess I have, I just want to echo the same concerns about the lighting. I mean, like Councilor Lehan said, the lighting's look fine. I mean, I think they just look like lights. It's nothing, like, you go in a lot of part of the city, like, they have a lot of character to them. And I know there's issues around who owns the poles and all of that, but I'd also echo the concerns around 5G. I think it's a brilliant point brought up. And I, I'm not totally jazzed with the way the lighting is right here, it seems, but I guess I'll just echo what everybody else had said, that I have the same concerns.
We need more information.
We need more info. Yep.
And then my question has to do with, not on your list, so maybe it's not your department, but is the utility boxes? So I presume there will be utility boxes. They never show in architectural pictures, of course. But I suggested this some time ago, where, where the intersection of utility boxes and public art is. If you go, I would suggest that you Google "Cordillane utility boxes." The city of Cordillane utility boxes. And you'll just see these fabulous artists' renderings on the utility boxes, all different artists, all different on these utility boxes, because they're all over town and they're just ugly. And they don't have to be. But, but the, there are some things like, and I think we're addressing it with signage, but utility boxes and signage can really clutter up and mess up a place pretty fast, and, and they never are in the architectural renderings. No signs, no, you know. And yet, you know, we have to consider that those things are going to be there, and how do we incorporate those also in the, in the streetscape? Yeah. Because these people on, in these streets, they don't need to have any signs to tell where they are, what they should do or not do. So, anyway.
Thank you. Really quick, just to kind of touch on that point of public art, too, and how that might have been into these plans. At the beginning of your presentation, you had the slide where was the map view showing which streets were standard and which ones were signature. That might help actually answer Councilor West's question of how this all plays out. I noticed that the Intersection 7 or the Location 7 was slated for enhanced, so that was kind of the middle level. I guess I had thought that maybe that intersection, being the entrance to Main Street, it may be some sort of public art or something to state, here's the beginning of Main Street, and really draw people into that, that area, might be a great idea. And your further slides did say something about, like, maybe there's opportunity for public art with the enhanced. I just wanted to confirm that that, there might be a possibility for that at the intersection because I think it could be a good idea of marking the space specifically for that significant street in the town center, so...
Yes. Councilor President Ockerville, we will be including guidance on how to incorporate public art, where, when, different scales, different situations for the code requirements because there'll be plazas and mid-block crossings, so like, when they can go there. And then also in that location, we'll have the, I think, one of the largest of the signage and wayfinding markers, but then it would also be nice to have public art there. So depending on what gets developed there, it would be great to have that integrated in that location.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Does that give you what you need, Mr. Brad?
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you. We will now move to...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And...
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Mayor, I got a note from our AV person that wants to remind us all to make sure our mics are on and that we're speaking into the mics.
I had mine.
That was probably me.
Okay, so we've got our mics...
It was on. It just wasn't close.
And...
I'm a frequent offender of that policy.
We'll move to the wireless communications facilities update, please.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors. I'm Cindy Looksoy, Associate Planner, and I'm here tonight to present information about amending the city's Planning Division fee schedule to include a wireless communication facilities section and to add a fee for appeals of complex administrative decisions. Staffs asking for council approval of the proposed changes by adopting Resolution 2905. By way of background, in 2018, to comply with FCC rulings governing small wireless facilities, council approved Ordinance Number 831, which amended City Code Sections 4.800 through 4.814 for wireless communication facilities, and approved Resolution Number 2720, which adopted small wireless facilities design standards and application and right-of-way fees. Subsequent to recent updates to federal regulations and related city code amendments for wireless communication facilities, a list of six unique application types were identified, each governed by different review timelines and levels of land use review and requiring various technical analyses. The technical analyses include components beyond the expertise of planning staff and necessitate appropriate expert review. So based on the identified need for assistance from experts, in 2020, the city issued a request for proposals for on-call professional services for technical review of these applications. And three proposals were received, and following evaluation by staff, Citiescape Consultants was chosen as the top applicant. The contract was fully executed earlier this year and includes a detailed fee schedule for technical review of the six unique application types that were identified. And based on city's application process, the type of land use review required and the corresponding fee schedule for Citiescape, staff developed a wireless communication facilities fee schedule, as shown in Attachments 1 and 2 of the council staff report. And the proposed fees, as shown on this slide, include both a planning application review fee and a technical design review fee for each of the application types. When the applications are submitted to the city, the applicant is required to deposit a combined planning application review fee and technical design review fee based on the number and type of applications. And once city staff completes the application review and issues a final decision, the city either invoices the applicant or refunds them the difference between the city's actual costs incurred and the deposit received when the application was submitted. Staff also is proposing to modify the appeals section of the Planning Division fee schedule, and the new fee would reflect appeals of more complex administrative decisions that require technical analysis and support, multidisciplinary review, director review, or formal interpretation. And these may include wireless communication facilities application types that previously would have been decided by the Development Review Board, but that are now required by federal statute to be processed administratively despite the complex nature of the review. Other examples would be an appeal of the Community Development Director's calculation of system development charges associated with new development under Wilsonville Code, Chapter 11, or an official planning director interpretation on a requirement, policy, or regulation in the Wilsonville Comprehensive Plan or Development Code. I know that's a lot of information to absorb, but I'm going to stop there, and thank you for listening to my presentation and entertaining any questions you might have.
Any questions? I read this in detail beforehand. That was a very good verbal... So, Councilor President Ockerville, are you indicating a question?
Sure. I'll indicate a question. I always have a question, I guess. I wonder, is there, so this, this concept that we either, like, that we make it, we make it good at the end, right? We either do the refund or we invoice for remainder. Do we have anything else like that that's slightly comparable, or do other cities operate like that? Is this an entirely new thing that we're trying, or what kind of context, I guess, on that sort of system?
I think the, the closest that I could, we could equate it to would be when a request comes in to do a traffic impact study, to engineering, and a request will come in, that goes to DKS consultants to develop a scope, which then comes back to the city and is forwarded to the applicant for review and approval, and there's some, a little bit of negotiation that goes on there. It's not exactly the same as this. I'm not aware of another process that's really, you know, any more comparable to this, that, you know, to, than that, that request, the way that those are, are reviewed and, and charged.
Okay.
You know, and what, what happened with this is just that we, with the, with the Citiescape contract, we realized that we have all these different applications, and we really need to, and the applicant, or not the applicant, the consultant, has charges that they, they, you know, charge. And so we wanted to just make sure that we're covering, we're recouping the costs of those. And, you know, that's what generated this.
Yeah. The concept. Do you think that in time, as more of these occur, that we might have a sense, and, or maybe it works out fabulously? I don't know. But the, it would be something that we would want to try to firm up, a, a more predicted, I guess?
Well, the, the, the actual Class 1 AR, Class 2 AR, and the CUP fees, those are the city fees, and those are escalated each year. Those are straight, you know, fees. The other, the add-ons, which are the 15, well, the 1800 or the 4,000 or 800, which are the consultant fees, those, this is a three-year contract that we have with them, so there may be some escalating or, you know, changes to those fees, depending on if we renegotiate with Citiescape to continue their contract. But those were there, the standard fees that they charge for each of these different types of applications.
Okay. So it comes from recommending?
You know, what we don't know is just how much time it's going to take to review these, so...
And if we, if we don't have some flexibility in this, because there are a number of unknowns to these types of contracts and services, might we end up having to subsidize that cost or, through our general fund? I mean, if you don't, if there's a cost for us to respond, and we're not recouping it, it's our responsibility to get an accurate and fair cost as best we can. it's our responsibility to get an accurate and fair cost as best we can.
Mm-hmm.
So is this, is this one way to address that variability?
I believe so. I, it, 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 you know, because, because we don't, we, we standard, you know, we generally get Class 2 AR applications. Those are the ones for like things like antenna swap outs or a tower extension or things like that. And so what we don't understand is the technical side of those things. And so I'm attempting to answer your question. I'm not doing a very good job. You know, I, it's hard to tell because we don't get these that often, you know, exactly how this is all going to work out. Right now, we do have three applications that Citiescape is is reviewing initially for us. It's kind, it's a sort of test cases, I guess, you know, to see how this works and how much time they take to review and how that works in with our review processes. And so we'll know, you know, we'll have something to base our our future, you know, discussion and review of these fees depending on how these three applications that we have right now work. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Councilwoman.
I just, I'm wondering, I understand that we currently have, currently have the contract with our consultant. And from what I understand, they have not been doing, is that correct? They have not been doing these?
These are our, the first, the three that we have with them right now are the first three.
Are the first three that we've received. So do you know if these rates are, are comparable to other, what other organizations might, or other consultants might be charging for the same service? Or do, or do we even have that option to determine that?
You know, when we were, when we were reviewing the RFPs, or the proposals that came in in response, they were, fee-wise, they were pretty comparable to what Citiescape was, was indicating. With the RFP, it was based on the small wireless facility review. So that would be that first one, the Class 1 AR. We ended up, after we had negotiated with Citiescape, or we expanded it to include assistance with the other two types of applications. So we don't have comparable information about that. We do have comparable about the small wireless.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I don't see any more questions. So thank you very much, Ms. Luxhoy. And we will move to the Bird Scooters. Thank you.
Hey, Council, how are you doing today?
Wonderful.
All right, hold on, Garrett. I'm going to have you hold on for one minute, please, sir. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, members of the City Council. I'm Chris Nam, who's the city's Community Development Director. And tonight, I'm here to introduce to you Mr. Garrett Granowski of Bird Scooters. He's in a, he is a, an account partner with Bird, and Mr. Granowski is going to provide us with an overview tonight of how the Bird system works, the various elements of the scooters, some of the benefits that the scooter program provides, as well as their specific approach to deployment of the scooters in communities across the country. By way of background, Mr. Granowski reached out to Councilor Linville early this year, 2021, to see if there was interest in the city partnering and entering into a partnership to deploy the scooters in the community. The city manager asked me to learn more about Bird Scooter's proposal, so I reached out to Mr. Granowski and several staff members. Dwight Breshear, Mark Ottnad, and myself received the briefing that the council is about to receive this evening. So, Mr. Granowski, we're on a relatively short timeline tonight, so we're going to hand over the mic here to you momentarily, just by way of additional information. So much like, so on, additional information includes the fact that much like the city's SMART department, Bird's mission is to get people out of cars. They're trying to solve the last mile challenge by connecting more residents to transit. They're trying to reduce congestion and overall reliance on single occupancy vehicles. They're looking to improve air quality and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And they strive to improve the overall quality of life in cities. I do want to say that when the staff met on this specific proposal, we did have some concerns about it, most notably potential competition with SMART, our bus service, because we run a very robust local bus service with seven local lines through our community. So there is the potential, I would say potential, for some folks to choose to ride a scooter rather than get on our, on our SMART network. And that was a concern that we discussed with Dwight. There's also the safety issue because helmets are optional on the program. They are encouraged, but they're optional. And I provided some stats and some numbers in the staff report regarding some of the accidents. It's not a surprise that these can be dangerous vehicles. So there are concerns about safety and liability. And then lastly, aesthetics clutter in the right of way and things along those lines. This particular product line does not include the docking stations that some of the other companies provide, where they are stood up and laid out in an orderly fashion in the right of way. These are placed in what are called nest locations that Mr. Granowski can speak to in a little bit more detail. So I should note that tonight is an informational work session. Mayor Fitzgerald, I'm really not looking for a specific action from the City Council. I wanted to introduce this topic at a high level, have you have the opportunity to be able to ask questions of the company. And then if you so chose to give me additional direction to go out and, you know, run, for example, a survey on let's talk Wilsonville to see if there's community desire for a product of this nature, or to do additional research in some of the communities where the product has been deployed. Staff can certainly do that and follow up with any number of approaches, or if there were other companies you wanted to learn specifically about, that would be another choice. So with that, I'll wrap it up and hand it off to Mr. Granowski.
I appreciate that introduction and thank you. I know we are brief on time, so I will jump into the presentation, keep it super high level. Really, what I am going to dive into this presentation is, one, what is Bird, but more of the details and time spent are going to be in the day-to-day operations, which will really paint a picture of a day-to-day life of a Bird scooter when it is operating in Wilsonville. As Chris did a great job, really, what is Bird? We pioneered this micro-mobility shared electric scooter space four years ago. I've been with the company for three and a half years implementing scooter programs and micro-mobility programs at the university and city level. So I really am here as a resource to you as you navigate this new transportation method in your community. We founded Bird to eliminate unnecessary car trips. We truly believe that anything under two miles long was an unnecessary car trip. So of course, our vehicle is the electric scooter to supplement that and be a more sustainable form of transportation. Along with that, we're also solving that first and last mile transportation issue. And two, helping with connectivity. So 55% of rides do end up in front of a local business or restaurant establishment. So helping to stimulate the local economy and really just getting the community back out into the community while providing these open-air, sustainable form of transportation again, to really supplement your existing, like, culture and infrastructure as well. We do govern the speed of these Bird scooters at 15 miles per hour, so that is the max speed that they can go. And they can also be limited, so we can implement geo-benz areas where, one, the scooter does not be allowed if there's a very congested downtown area, or if there's somewhere where you don't allow bicycles, skateboards, we can definitely keep the scooters out of those areas as well. So the program itself is very customizable, but now really just want to jump into what those day-to-day operations would look like. First things first, when you sign up for the app, you have to go through, well, first you have to be 18 years or older to operate a Bird scooter. Then you go through multiple riding tutorials that really take you through the rules, the regulations, and the scooter etiquette that you should expect when riding in Wilsonville. Again, this is all customizable, so what really what the city wants portrayed in the app, you can customize. Then, when you open up the app, you will be able to see, the city limits would be the operating zone where you can take the Bird scooters. Again, customizable on where that operating zone would be. The available Bird scooters would be signaled by this Bird logo. Again, you would walk up to it, you would scan the QR code. It is a dollar to unlock, and then 30 cents per minute after that. So it is a time-based meter. This is a series of short-term rentals, so multiple trips per scooter per day. Average time being spent on a Bird scooter is about 10 to 20 minutes. Average distance is about a mile to two and a half miles long. This would be the vehicle itself, along with having a bell, a street legal with lights, reflectors, brake lights, all of that, the bells and whistles. It also has customer service right on the scooter as well, so it has a number and email that anyone in the community can reach out to Bird as well for feedback. Transportation benefits, I'll also be able to provide this post-call, but we've got kind of been touching on those. Now I want to go into how we've been able to run operations in sizes similar to Wilsonville. So pre-COVID, we were only operating in these large metropolitan cities that obviously had large populations, because we needed a warehouse space, we needed to put feet on the ground to run operations. That's no longer the case. We now partner with a local entrepreneur, a local business owner. So this is a resident in Wilsonville who will be running day-to-day operations on the Bird scooters. We call them our fleet manager because they will be managing this micro fleet of Bird scooters. We would start Wilsonville with about 50 scooters, so in those large metropolitan cities, there's hundreds if not thousands. So this is a micro fleet, but it's still 50 scooters, less more than you had before. So this individual, this resident, would be managing and running day-to-day operations on this fleet of 50 scooters. And now I just want to take you through kind of a day-to-day life of this fleet manager and the Bird scooter. First things first, all charging is done behind closed doors, so the scooters are selected each and every night, so nothing will be on the streets. During that time, this local individual will be charging them to 100%, so they can be a reliable source of transportation to the community, maintaining them, and making sure that they just look good aesthetically as well. First things first, around six or seven in the morning is when operations begin. This local individual will start to strategically place the Bird scooters into high-demand, strategically thought-out positions that will best serve the community. As Chris said, these are the initial parking spots. We call them nest locations. There's a lot of Bird puns when you work with us, so just buckle up for that. These nest locations can be recommendations from the city, recommendations from the community, but also at our core, we are a data company, so the longer we run operations, the more trends we see, the better we can serve the community. We can actually see where people are opening up the Bird app looking for a ride. We can see where people start the ride and where people end the rides as well. So a lot of hard data goes into this planning as well. The city themselves will also be the city dashboard. That really does three things. One, you'll be able to see where this micro fleet is in real time, so each individual scooter, you'll have a bird's eye view of Wilsonville. Two, you'll be getting trip data, so that ride starts, and then three, that ride ends. So giving you some hard data behind the numbers on how the community is actually using this, which I know Planted loves in some other communities. Throughout the day, this local point of contact will also be proactively managing these Bird scooters. What that means is they will be getting multiple touches on Bird scooters throughout the day. So we're in the, on the streets, in the, running operations. So number one, they'll be rebalancing. That is a Bird phrase from moving low-demand scooters back to high-demand areas. So again, we want to be a reliable source of transportation, so if someone does take it from the downtown area to the residence, we love that they're using it as that last-mile solution. But we also know it's not best serving the community in front of a resident or a household. So that local individual would be notified in real time that Bird XYZ at this location needs to be relocated back to their nest location. Two, they'll also be maintaining and servicing these vehicles as well. When it comes to parking, we can implement outside of these nest locations, recommended parking areas. Again, we are a dockless model, so no additional infrastructure is needed for us to run operations. So all of our parking is dockless. So it all starts with rider education, again, working with the city to give promotions, that rider tutorials, and then proactive messaging through email and in-app campaigns. On top of all of that, we can implement incentives for people to park in certain places as well. So when you open up the app, you can see, once you start to ride, those preferred parking keys, if you know where you are, your end destination is, you can click on one of those. It will give you the address, a picture of what it should look like when you get there, incentives to park there, and when you do get there, you end your ride. All rides, the rider has to take a picture to end the ride. This gives us a chance to, one, apply incentives, but two, also audit riders for educational touchpoints if need be. Last thing I really want to touch on is the customer service aspect of it. I already touched on that each vehicle will have a phone number and email address on it, but the best tool to interact with that local point of contact in Bird is an app tool called Community Mode. So if you do see a Bird that's parked improperly or unsafe riding in real time, you can report that to us, then our technology matches up where that complaint came from, where that scooter was, and we're able to reach out to that rider to, one, educate them, but if it gets to that certain point, we can penalize as well. So we can assist, find, and ban riders from the app as well. Then, this model has just been rolled out this year. Our smallest-sized market that we're doing the same model is Hartsville, South Carolina, has a population of 7,000, and we've been running this size model all the way up to cities as big as 80,000 right now. So just some cities where this has been proven and utilization has been actually better than our core markets. And that is sufficient, so now I'll open it up for any questions, concerns, words of wisdom.
Councilor West has a question.
Chris, thank you. Garrett, thank you for presenting. I am a customer. I have your app on my phone. We were in Austin, Texas in April, and we discovered Bird there. We used it nonstop. I can't even think if we used an Uber or Lyft or taxi. So the product was great, but the one thing I did notice was, and I don't know if you can speak to this, and maybe you did a little bit, is my one concern, if we brought it here to Wilsonville, because it's a fun, great product, but by the end of the night, there were scooters just littered on the sidewalks. I mean, to the point where I was like, I feel like, like, you know, you get annoyed at your kid when you're like, why can't you put your bike up? Like, like, why can't you just set it? And like, there's the place you put your bike, right there, but that's not what happened. They were just really strewn about, and I didn't know if you guys had a solution for that. I think that comes down to individual users being good citizens. Unfortunately, in Austin, it was a beautiful, wonderful city, and I literally loved using the product. It was so fun and efficient and great. I was really concerned from a council point of view about how you manage, and it sounds like President Akbar has the same experience getting a nod over there. And so I didn't know if you could speak to that. What are, what are the solutions? Because I think that there really is a viability to this. I think that it really meets a lot of our goals and visions, but how do you speak to managing that, your, the 50 scooters here and making sure that those are being used properly, not littered?
And that's really the benefit of using this fleet manager model in these smaller to mid-sized markets. As you said, you really enjoyed them in Austin. Austin has thousands of scooters, so it's much harder to get multiple touchpoints than every single scooter when it's that massive capacity. So on the pure volume side, we'll be starting with 50 scooters with one individual managing them, and it will be the full-time job to get multiple touchpoints off them. And two, we've been seeing in these smaller to mid-sized markets that that individual is kind of a better citizen. So in Wilsonville, you probably have a better chance of knowing who's riding that Bird scooter than you do when you go to Austin, where there's a lot of tourism and people come into the city, ride the Bird scooters, don't really care what the rules and regulations are, and then they leave. This is going to be more of a community deal as well, so layer that on top of just having 50 scooters instead of hundreds of thousands, getting those multiple touchpoints. And then it really does always come down to education as well, so putting that rider into an educational funnel, working with the city of Wilsonville to produce a press release to educate the community on what is the proper use of this. But if all else fails, you can always report bad parking with that community mode, and we'll be able to reach out to that individual and they'll obviously first be educated, but then consequences can be applied as well.
Thank you. I do have, you know, we do have another minute maybe on this. I, I think that was a great presentation. We got a lot of detail, and we can probably research some more. Do you have anything to summarize the safety element of it? Because that is a big part of this. If helmets are not required, maybe it's that certain segment of the population that doesn't put their helmet on, that doesn't put their scooter away. I don't know. What do you have to say?
Sorry, go ahead.
But what, what can a city do to get the best safety and protect the riders and, and, you know, limit that?
Yeah, of course, first, it's all education. Again, building that education platform. Building that education platform into that funnel that we're putting that rider in is something that Bird really takes pride in. Two, although helmets are not required, they are recommended. Helmets are available for all Bird users. All they have to do is buy it in-app or order it in-app and just pay for shipping and handling, which I believe is about $7.99. And, three, we also incentivize riders to use helmets. So we have little in-app features. Where if you take a helmet selfie before you start your ride, you get a discount. So we're always promoting helmet use, promoting safety. But of course, if it's not a state requirement, we cannot require our users to do it. But we give them the resources to obviously have the best option to use it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Council. Thanks, Chris.
All right, thanks a lot. Appreciate that. Thank you, Chris and Garrett. And so now, we will move to Mr. Vance for the Twist Bioscience Wilsonville Investment Now Zone presentation. And he's going to be on video, right?
All right, good evening, Council. Are we up?
Yes, we are.
All right. Good evening, Council. Jordan Vance. I'm Economic Development Manager with the city. And I'm here tonight with Elaine Howard of Elaine Howard Consulting to talk about the implementation of a single-site urban renewal district in Wilsonville called the Twist Bioscience Win Zone. Elaine is part of our urban renewal consulting team. She is the author of the Twist Win Zone Plan and Report, and will be walking us through the process to create a new urban renewal area in Wilsonville tonight. Over to you, Elaine.
Thank you, Jordan. I will go through four slides and then turn it back to Jordan. So urban renewal has been a very important tool for the city of Wilsonville. I have worked on, I think, all of your urban renewal areas. And you have had very successful economic results in your city from using urban renewal. The role of an agency, which this will come before you tonight, not as your city council, but as your urban renewal agency, is to review the components of a plan and report and authorize staff or direct staff to send it out through the public review process, which we will go through in a minute. So you aren't voting on approval of the plan and report. That is done actually by the city council, and that is expected to happen in August. Wilsonville has three existing urban renewal areas that cover around 22% of the city's acreage. You may have up to 25% of your acreage in urban renewal. Two out of three of your plans are winding down in the coming years, and one is just ramping up, and that is the Coffee Creek area. If you want me to go through those areas more in detail here, I can. But I think what I'm going to do is just get through to the actual win program information. So if you want to go to that, Jordan. So this shows the assessed value and acreage statutory limitations. Every time we do an urban renewal area for you, we have to double-check these limitations to make sure you're under the 25%. That west-side area is 411 acres, and it is estimated to close in 2025. The year 2000 area has 449 acres and is estimated to close in 2023. Coffee Creek is relatively new, and it will go on for a number of years. And then, the Twist Bioscience Win Zone is only 4.4 acres. But that puts you, right now, if that is adopted by city council in August, at 22.69, which is still below 25%, knowing that your two major areas will be retired in the next couple of years. For the frozen base assessed value, you are well below your 25% of the city. We do not have information about the frozen base assessed value of the Twist Bioscience Win Zone. And that is something that will be provided by the assessor at the time this area is established. What we do know is that it will come nowhere near exceeding your 25%. It will probably only kick you up to something still below 7% of total assessed value. So we are not worried about that information coming in the future. Next slide. This is the process of reviewing and adopting an urban renewal plan, or TIF zone. Tonight, you have an agency review and vote on authorization to move forward with the public review process by reviewing and adopting Resolution 318. On June 24th, or by June 24th, we will send, the city will send transmittals to all the different taxing districts who would be impacted by the proposed win zone. There is a required 45-day comment period on that. And there is a required briefing by Clackamas County Commission. There is no action required from them, but the statute does require that you provide a briefing. There is a planning commission hearing scheduled for July 14th to review conformance to your Wilsonville comprehensive plan. We do not anticipate any negative issues from that, because it is, this plan in concept is very similar to what existed in the TIF zone plan, and it conforms to your economic sections of your planning commission comprehensive plan. On August 16th, there will be a public hearing and city council vote on a non-emergency ordinance. A non-emergency ordinance does not go into effect for 30 days. If that passes and goes through the 30-day process, then this would be in effect in middle of September and able to go into effect with the potential developer. Next slide.
All right, thank you, Elaine. I'll talk a little bit about the project from Twist Bioscience. Twist is a California-based firm, and they are proposing to redevelop nearly 200,000 square feet in Wilsonville, resulting in an infusion of $70 million in investment and the creation of 200 new jobs. The urban renewal district would be 4.4 acres and would last for seven years. So what does Twist do and what will they be doing at this new facility in Wilsonville is a question that we've been receiving a lot. Twist is a bioscience company, and it has proprietary technology enabling it to manufacture synthetic DNA by writing the DNA on silicon chips. Their products have a range of applications, including rare disease detection, oncology, and infectious disease. At this facility in Wilsonville, they will be manufacturing genes and proteins that will help in the construction of what is called antibody therapeutics. This expansion will help Twist to double their manufacturing capacity and employ a range of local talent, from PhD scientists to engineers to lab technicians with two-year degrees. Twist chose to expand in Wilsonville due to our location's access to tech and bioscience talent, as well as the region's many advanced manufacturing firms. This project has been noted as one of the largest investments in the Portland region this past year. Biotech is considered a cluster industry where firms are often geographically concentrated and share resources and talent. With the big Twist investment in Wilsonville, it is possible others will follow, helping to grow the biotech industry in Wilsonville and the region. What we're showing on this slide is our most conservative projection of what we think the net increase in assessed value from the improvements would be here, at around $48.7 million. But it could certainly be higher than that. From the value that we show here, we are showing that the total taxes that Twist would be paying in their first year of operation would be $944,000 per year. But not all of that would be subject to the WIN Urban Renewal District. Instead, around 2/3 of that, $597,000, is the estimate that WIN would receive in the first year. The difference is due to general obligation bond rates and local option levy tax rates. Those taxes would continue to be paid to the jurisdictions imposing them without being impacted by the WIN projects. Roughly 63% of total taxes would be paid into the WIN program, and the bulk of that would be repaid to Twist as a rebate, less the 10% administrative cost from the city. These are all showing taxes in year one, and this would be a seven-year program. The amount of money in each subsequent year would depend on how much the property value for Twist either appreciates or depreciates over time. A little bit of that is unknown, as each piece of machinery and equipment will have its own depreciation schedule. And the exact amount of the building and how it depreciates over time also has some uncertainty as well. When we look at the high and low-end forecast of how much TIF revenue could be generated over that period of time, we're looking at a total of around, of a range of $2.9 million on the low end and $5.6 million total on the high end over the course of the seven-year period. These charts show the gross TIF distributed to the WIN zone and overlapping taxing districts during and after the WIN zone. The reason why the annual TIF revenue is shown declining for the first several years of the WIN zone is because the depreciation of personal property value is expected to outpace the appreciation of real property values. You can see the taxing districts start to realize the tax revenue gains following the closure of the district around 2030. And these are revenue gains that might not exist in the first place absent the urban renewal incentive. So this concludes our presentation. And as a reminder, tonight's action, like Elaine said, is to authorize staff to send out the report and plan for formal review and process by the taxing districts and the planning commission. And this is an action for the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. The agency is not adopting the plan tonight. That will happen via ordinance likely in August after the public review process is taken place. This concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine and Jordan. Councillors, do you have any comments, questions? All right. Thank you for that presentation. And we have a lot more presentations ahead of us on this. And we'll see you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have, I believe, managed all of our items on the work session. So I'm going to adjourn the work session, and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM for the city council meeting. Meeting adjourned.